Hello, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Before we go forward, I just want to take a moment on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and everybody at the township to express our condolences to the Schweiger family at the passing of Mary Schweiger. For those of you that don't know, Mary was a longtime chairperson of the Township Parks and Recreation Board. She raised her family here in Snowball Gate and was a strong and tireless advocate of making Middletown Township a really great place to live, especially through its park system and the Park and Rec Department. She'll always be remembered for developing some really iconic township events, including the Easter Egg Hunt and the Holiday Open House that a lot of us just enjoyed last week. In the early 1990s, Mary was a strong advocate for acquiring the 42-acre parcel of land that is now Middletown Community Park, and there's a gazebo dedicated to Mary's name at the community park to acknowledge her efforts. So again, we just want to pass on our thoughts and prayers and condolences to the Schweiger family, and I would ask everyone to please just take a minute and join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Ms. Corple, would you please call roll?
Mr. Kezak?
Here.
Ms. Payne?
Here.
Ms. Hannah?
Here.
Ms. Kane?
Here.
We also have Township Manager Ms. Tully Coles, Township Assistant Manager Mr. Valla, Township Solicitor Mr. Esposito, and Township Engineer Mr. Kessler in attendance.
Thank you, Ms. Corple. Just one announcement, and that is that the next Board of Supervisors meeting will be our reorganization meeting, and that's scheduled for Tuesday, January 3, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Next, that brings us to public comment, and this is public comment on non-agenda items only. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? I do have one that was received via email. This is from Sheldon Post, Red Rose Gate, and he says, "Since I've appeared before the Board several times to question the status of Phase 2 of the section's signage changes, I didn't want it to go by unnoticed that the signs have been going up. I particularly wanted Mr. Valla to know that I've noticed, since I always cast a sideward glance toward him when looking for updates. Kudos to all involved in this continuing project. The uniformity is looking good around the township. Thank you." And again, that's Sheldon Post from Red Rose Gate. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda items, and those are as follows. Item A: Consideration of authorizing payment of the December 12, 2022 bills list in the amount of $2,8,510.15. Item B: Consideration of approving the November 14, 2022 minutes of the public meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. Item C: Consideration of approving payment certificate number four for the 2022 road program to James D. Morrissey, Inc. in the amount of $40,359.53. Item D: Consideration of approving payment certificate number one for the 2022 Middletown Township CDBG curb ramp replacement program to NJS Concrete in the amount of $181,328.42. Item E: Consideration of approving financial security release number one for the Oxford Valley Mall multifamily redevelopment in the amount of $576,765. And finally, item F: Consideration of Farm Fund Long-Term Advocate Debt Forgiveness. Is there a motion on the consent agenda items?
Make a motion to approve all consent agenda items.
Thank you, Ms. Corple. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. Next on the agenda: Consideration of preliminary and final land development for proposed construction of warehouses at 1600 East Old Lincoln Highway, Northern and Southern Industrial Sites, S/LD #22-05 in the M1 Light Manufacturing zoning district. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the Board, Township staff. My name is Mike Malloy. I'm from the law firm Obermeyer Rem and Maxwell Hippel. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, 213 Industrial LLC, which is a related entity to Foxfield Industrial, which is a major warehouse developer of first-class warehouse space around the East Coast and across the country. And I have with here with me tonight Nick Eddy, Walter Cabot, Devin Santilli, and Mark Tang, all from Foxfield, and our engineering team from Kinley Horn to answer any of your questions. In deference to your schedule tonight and the possibility of public comment on this application, I'd like to run through our presentation this evening and then turn the questions over to our great experts and client. From the expert team, I've got Paul Hughes, who you've met before, and Taylor Morgan, who are the design engineers. I've got Tad Hardy. He did the sound studies and can answer sound questions, which was one of the Board's concerns, and Corey Green on traffic. As you know, and I think I have control here. Let's see. I don't know. If we could, yeah, there we go. You're familiar with the site. The site is bounded by 295, sort of to the northwest, and it's bisected by Maple Avenue. There are two warehouses proposed, one to the north, one to the south. The one to the north is 360,000 square feet. The one to the south is 451,000 square feet. Last time, you know, we described the project. You're familiar with it. Your planning commission's seen it. Some things happened. Some things went down last time. And I think from a law school 101 perspective, it was the two sort of important tenants of land use and land development law sort of at issue here. The first was when your Board Chairman made a motion to approve, and that first tenant is when you have a plan that meets the objective requirements of your ordinance, the municipality is compelled to approve the plan. And that is what we thought we presented the last time, when we presented our plan. Now, what happened after that, we made a motion to deny the plan that was then tabled, and that sort of raised the second tenant, and the most important, perhaps more important than the first, and that is the Pennsylvania Municipalities Code, and not to bore everybody to death, but it allows for a give-and-take process, and the courts have discussed that give-and-take process between the municipality and the land developer because the municipality has an interest in protecting the public good. And so, we heard some information pretty loud and clear from the Board, and that there were three things, three major things, that we needed to discuss tonight in order to bring this plan back before you and hopefully compel you to approve preliminary and final plan application this evening. And so, those three things were first, landscaping and buffering. And so, I'd move to the first slide. And the slide's a little complicated, so bear with me, and I'm not sure if I can, if you'll see the green here. Okay, you won't. So, toward the right is where we started. Now, that long parking structure sort of thing is a parking area where there was a truck turnaround and the required amount of buffering. And that was the buffering that we were required to do under your ordinance. Now, after that, we heard public comment because, as you can see, to the further to the east is the residential neighborhood that debuts. Now, these distances are a bit deceiving because there is a great distance. There's at least, in all places, at least 150 feet from the residential property line to the parking area, and in this northern area, as you can see, we did some design changes, and we moved the truck parking and the truck turning area all the way to the west, and then we put in its place the buffer, more buffer area, birmingham, plus the stormwater management features for that area. So, we created and redesigned the plan to create a larger distance between the neighbors and the activity that would go on on the northern site. In addition to that, and as you can see in the middle, and there is a difference if you study it, there is a 20% increase in the landscaping. So, that's above and beyond your ordinance requirements, and your ordinance requirements requires trees and shrubs, okay? 80% of the additional landscaping is trees. And I know, trees grow, okay? They're gonna have to grow. But part of the thing at issue here that I want the Board and the public to maybe consider is that you have a first-class developer here that is committed to maintaining the development in a first-class manner all the time, and that means maintaining the trees, making sure the shrubs are growing, making sure the lawns are cut, because they have tenants that are going to demand that for the rents that they're paying for these warehouses. So, I would just ask you to consider that when you're thinking about trees and landscaping and growth. This is a long-term commitment from a first-class land developer. The next thing we did, and this becomes important as we talk about sound, we added a wall. It's a sound-rated buff tech wall, eight foot high by certain teed, and it's pretty nice-looking. Compared to the fence that is in various points of disarray out there now, it's a pretty nice thing to have, and it blocks, as you'll see, because I'll advance the next slide, because we show a video. Now, these videos are from three perspectives on the property. One to the far north, that's video two. One to the east, still to the northern property, and then one from the property looking out. And these videos, and I am crossing my fingers that these videos work. Let's see. Hold on. They show the existing conditions, and then they show what it's gonna look like when the building's in place, and the landscaping's in place, and the wall is in place. Now, that was from, well, we'll go through it again. Okay. There's a substantial, and we could pause that there, there's a substantial grade change. So, the building sits substantially lower at certain points, and you can see that grade change, you know, that we described, I think, last time when you saw that, we have the slide, but it's not in this deck. The little person sort of looking out, you know, onto the building. This is the second perspective, video two. This is from the far north. I'm gonna go back again and show you exactly where the wall is gonna go because I want it to be clear, but this is looking north, looking south from the residential property lines into the property. And then, you get the point. We can go to the third video, please. I think I can do it. And then, this is looking from the property, from the industrial property out toward the north, and you can see the berm, the wall, the landscaping in two stages, sort of when it's planted, and then when it's gonna look like when it's mature. And we can see that one again. I know they go a little fast. Thank you. So, existing conditions: cleanup, birmingham, trees at first, mature trees. So, I'd just like to go back. So, the wall, and this is gonna become, if we could go back to the slide where it just shows the property. So, if you see north of video two, so above, and we described this last time, above the stormwater management facility are mature trees and a fence that runs through them. The trees are nice. They're not weed trees. The residents have expressed an interest in keeping them. We should definitely keep them. It's a thick, mature growth that improves, you know, the screening there and should not be touched unless we enhance it, which we would be happy to do. But the wall ends north of the parking area, next to the stormwater management structure, and then continues down all through to the east, to the east property line. Now, we can go, one of the Board's major issues was sound, and recognize that the, and we can flip forward if we can, I don't know if I'm able to do it, but flip forward through the videos to sound. Go ahead, keep going. This is existing conditions, and I've got Tad Hardy here. He's, you know, probably forgot more about sound than I'll ever know, so, but be it as it may, the dark area is the noisiest, the green areas are the least noisy, the source of noise is generally the existing highways. Those are the existing conditions today. So, if we could go, these are daytime conditions. If we could go to the next slide, please? These are existing nighttime conditions. You get a little bit of, you know, a tail, whatever it's called, in the sound at night, you'd expect less traffic during the evening. So, if we go to the third slide. So, the building itself actually attenuates some of the noise. You can see it starts to block off, you know, some of the roadway noise. Now, when you impose the barrier, next slide, it cuts off a tremendous amount of the noise. And this is inclusive of, you know, our truck traffic, our truck noise, normal noise during the day. It's not quiet during the day now, right? So, the wall, and the wall is, this is a, this is not something you just, you know, go buy at Home Depot, okay? This is a real, like, structure that is substantial, and that is why you get the sound rating that you do and the benefit, the ancillary benefit that you're going to get, you know, from the installation of the wall. Okay, we could go, we could go on. So, the next thing, and I know, you know, we talked about it. I don't have the numbers. I'm not gonna rattle them off. It's a lot of traffic. Your engineer confirmed it. We confirm it. It's a lot of warehouses, a lot of trucks, it's a lot of things. So, you know, what is an applicant to do? They're at the mercy of PennDOT and the township rules. We have state roads. What are we obliged to do? What are we obligated to do for you and for PennDOT? Well, we're obligated to meet your traffic ordinances, to pay your statutory traffic impact fee, to mitigate, you know, our, you know, our impact to the point where it is the same as it is today, right? We keep it all the same even though we unleash all of our cars and trucks on you. And, okay, I've been doing this for 20 years. A bad applicant would have stood here in front of you and said, "Deny it," okay? Because they're obligated to do certain things. Now, what a good community partner does, though, is takes that, asks you to table it, right? So, they can go work it out. And so, the give-and-take, you know, happened. We met with the community, we're hoping that some of the things that we discussed, some of the things that we told them we were gonna do by way of the wall, by way of the sound, satisfies those concerns. We also understand that there's just no way to satisfy every concern, right? But we know we meet those objective criteria, so, you know, we're confident, right? But a good community partner does more than that. They meet with you, and the traffic engineers from your, and we can flip through these slides. You know, we're doing roadway improvements. Corey Green can talk to you until, you know, give you all the information you want about a left-hand turn lane and how it takes the traffic off the road faster, right? But let's cut to the chase. The township has existing problems today and has bites at the apple when projects come in to negotiate potential solutions to larger community problems. And, you know, again, we can flip through and we can see our, we could keep going, our improvements that'll, you know, mitigate our impact that are required by PennDOT, but let's get to the last slide. Keep going, please. So, the township's identified six intersections in addition to the one that we're responsible for that are causing major traffic issues along this corridor, and it's Maple and our site, which, again, that's not really included in what I'm gonna say, Maple and Wheeler, Maple and South Flower Mill, Maple North Flower Mill, Maple, I'm sorry, North Flower Mill and Shopping Center, Tarleton, and Winchester Avenues. And so, right now, these are normal lights, and they just sit there, and they turn green, and they turn red, and, you know, you do the whole thing. There is something called an adaptive system, and your traffic engineer has identified these lights, and that, all I can say is, and Corey can tell you, they have brains, okay? They understand traffic patterns, they change and they adapt, and the bottom line for the township is a 20% to 30% decrease in travel times, okay? So, people are going to, and this is scientifically studied, and people can laugh and all they want, but it's scientifically studied, okay? And the applicant's volunteering to put a million dollars toward that installation of those, unrestricted voluntary contribution, but theoretically toward the installation of those signals. And those signals aren't just for our site, they're for the whole corridor, they're for the community at large, and we believe there'll be a vast improvement. So, that is all I have. That is what I thought were the high points of what we have. Oh, installation, this is phasing construction, someone had asked that, I believe, installation of sound barrier at the beginning, the demolition of the existing bridge, and the idea is to construct both warehouses simultaneously. So, with that, I offer my client and our experts up to any questions from you, or if you care of the public, or if you have questions for me, I'm happy to ask, you know, from a legal perspective, but I'm sure you have your solicitor here, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'll take the opportunity to thank you for the effort that was made on a number of levels. First and foremost, the community engagement, the willingness to meet with residents and hear directly concerns, and willingness to make what I feel truly are good faith changes and improvements to the project design, directly to the areas that, as you indicated, were, it seemed to be most important to the residents and to this Board. I obviously was willing to make a motion to approve the last time, and I remain willing to do that, so I'm gonna defer to my colleagues to the extent they have any questions for yourself or any of the professionals.
No, I just wanted to reiterate, I thank you for meeting with the neighbors, for addressing some of our concerns. We understand that, you know, it's, traffic is always a concern. It's very close to neighborhoods, and the noise level was a concern. We did get a chance to see some of your plans earlier, and I was happy with the improvements that you made, and I wanted to thank you for reaching out to the neighborhood and keeping our community in mind with this project.
Then, what I'll do if none of my colleagues have questions or concerns or comments, I'll open it up for public comment now to the extent anyone wants to be heard on this matter. Yeah, ma'am, just come up and state your name and address, please.
Hi, friends. We all know each other by now. I'm Susan Coretto. I live on Third Street. So, I've been taking notes during this presentation, and the first thing I want to say was, the meeting with the neighbors was not truly a meeting. It was a dog and pony show. We had an agenda, which was sent to them ahead of time, but rather than follow that agenda, they came in with donuts and coffee and pretty pictures to try to sway the public's opinion towards this ill-planned project. The second thing I want to say is, is that some attempt to bribe the Board with the donation of a million dollars for some artificial intelligence traffic lights? Like, why would that even come up? That sounds a little fugazi to me, and fugazi is a word that's used generally in my family when things don't sound right. If you needed a variance to get this project going to start with, you were never in compliance with the community standards, so the variance shouldn't have been approved to start with. There's no reason why a building that big should be in this community. Variances are only supposed to be granted after all attempts to use the property Variances are only supposed to be granted after all attempts to use the property as it's zoned have been exhausted. I did not see any evidence presented at any time that any effort was made to use this property within the standing zoning compliance regulations. First-class developers never live forever, so unfortunately, what happens when this developer moves on? We're stuck with this albatross as it exists. My next statement is, since the new owner cares so much about our neighborhood, why has he or she done nothing to improve the property since they took ownership? And I've never seen trees that change color on the schedule that represents these pretty graphics that they put up for us, which just reinforces the fact that these are artificial graphics, they're not reality. And Route 213 is not the noisy side of our property, having lived there for over 25 years. The bulk of our noise comes from 95. So the building blocking 213 is not going to improve any noise levels of any significant And there's absolutely no reason why this investor couldn't have bought property and built this facility in an area that's more prone to this kind of development and wouldn't have a significant impact on this beautiful, quiet community that is Langhorne Middletown Township.
Any other public comment? I'm looking for a gentleman. Yes, ma'am, just please state your name and address.
Michelle McKay, 1921 Second Street in Langhorne Gardens. So I also want to reiterate what you said and thank the developers for their efforts. I can see that they really did hear us and tried to address, you know, the bulk of our concerns with the barriers and the sound. I didn't hear anything about whether or not they were changing for a 24/7 operation. That's our largest concern, is that 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, the beep, 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 beep of those trucks backing up and them idling out there, putting exhaust fumes into the homes that back up directly to this property, which will happen, unless I miss their mitigation of that. I also would like to tell you that I work at Maple Point Middle School. Today, going to work, some days it's taken me three minutes to get there, some days six minutes, some days 10 minutes, today 45 minutes while the train was stopped on Woodburn Road. Forty-five minutes going to work this morning. I come home for lunch a lot of times because I live close enough. Coming home from work, or from lunch, to go to lunch today, yet another freight train kept me for not as long, only 15 minutes this time. Fifteen minutes of my one-hour lunch break. So those roads are horrendous. There's just no other way to describe them. And this will make them horrendous times 600,000, adding that many vehicles to our roads going through this township and traversing those little roads, Woodburn Road, 213. It is a nightmare now, it's going to be much more of a nightmare. And I just, again, I appreciate their efforts, but there's just nothing that they can do bringing in another 600 vehicles per day to eliminate that. It's going to negatively impact the life of not only Langhorne Gardens, but this entire township, anybody who traverses those roads. Thank you.
Other public comment? Yes, sir. State your name and address.
My name is Fred Weiner. I live at 1903 Second Street in Langhorne Gardens. Michelle was just talking about traffic, and the last time we met, one of the people that work for Kimley &amp; Horn, is it? Allowed me to take a picture of a page from their plan, their plan. It was page 18, and it was titled "Site Access Traffic Generation." And it listed numbers of vehicles that will be coming in and out of that site on a given day in the morning per hour. The total number of trips going in and out of that facility will be 4,227 vehicles. That means in the PM peak hour, 684. In the AM peak hour, 748 per hour. And if you travel on Route 213 going from Woodburn toward Route 1, north or south, you have sat in traffic well before Wheeler Way, going all the way past Dunkin' Donuts to any of the entrances to highway or to continue straight. It's horrendous now. Imagine 4,000 more vehicles a day on that road. Where are you going to put them? How far back will that traffic go? Answer that, guys. I mean, we live there, you don't, you got all these plans, they don't seem realistic to me. Your traffic lights would have to be freaking geniuses to handle that traffic, and I don't think they will be able to. So if you could address that, that'd be wonderful. Again, I have it in writing from your book. Thank you.
If the applicant wants to take the opportunity to address any of the questions or concerns that are raised, feel free to jump in, or we can continue on with any additional public comment and wait until the end. It's your choice.
Yeah, given the, let's allow the continuity to continue, and if the board's okay with that, I mean, instead of addressing them piecemeal, we'll take note of it and then address whatever the board would like us to address. Thank you.
Yep, fair enough. Any other public comment? Yes, sir. Please just state your name and address.
Ed Calvella, 314 Yelm Avenue in the gardens, it backs up right against the north site, where we've been, all storage lot was. As everybody mentioned, the concern is about traffic, and I agree with that, because even the other day, at 12 o'clock in the afternoon, trying to get from Second Street across 213, down the hill to Route 1, you could not do it. I mean, the traffic was just a mess. And people do tend to block that intersection and gridlock it. And if you turn right to get down 213, you have traffic lights, as the gentleman said, at Wheeler Way, at South Flowers Mills, North Flowers Mills, and it tends to back up all the way up to the railroad bridge. And plus, you're facing the sun, which is in your eyes, that slows traffic down. You're going into the borough, which is a mess already, with this proposed development that they want to do, excuse me, with the big interchange that they're going to put on the superhighway down there, which intersects with 413. It's a mess. Plus, now, I haven't seen it myself, but there have been incidents where a couple tractor-trailers, when there's a backup on Woodburn, have tried to cut through the gardens. Now, we have pictures of that, and there's three or four tractor-trailers that have come in, not local delivery, just trying to make a shortcut through so they can think they can back out to 213. And it's not going to work, guys. It's just not going to work. It's a total disaster right now. And you, of all people, should know that, okay? You're supposed to be representing the community and us. Think about it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Sue Lamon, 1721 Second Street. I would reiterate the traffic concern, so they didn't touch on the traffic lights that go down Woodburn Road, the two traffic lights right there. Traffic is constantly backed up. I don't see any improvement there, so that's my first concern. Second concern is right, the noise and the air pollution that are going to happen the 24 hours. When we were at the meeting, one of our biggest concerns was the overnight noise and the overnight trucks running and all of our HVAC units just sucking in the fumes. I'd like to see that addressed, you know? There's other warehouses that don't allow truck traffic 24/7. That would be huge for us. And then my other thing is, I understand the zoning board seems to, in my opinion, rubber-stamped everything okay. That doesn't make it okay. You know, other zoning boards have rubber-stamped, North Hampton, right, just went through this, rubber-stamped everything for Wawa, but the supervisors in the townships fought with the community to get it denied because it was the right thing to do. Our zoning board is not. It's rubber-stamping every development and just, the community is getting overdeveloped. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Again?
Same name and address. I only have one other question. You proposed demolition of that bridge. What time of day are you going to do that? That's going to impact a lot of traffic as well, unless they do it at night. Can you address that?
He's asking about, when the bridge is demolished, when is the demolition going to take place? He's concerned that it's going to happen.
Is it daylight or nighttime?
All right. We'll address it. Any other public comment?
It's important, one more comment. You know, it's not just about noise, it's not just about pollution, it's not just about traffic, it's about a quality of life that's being removed from us. On one side, we've got 660 apartments going up, and you know what traffic that's going to bring to us, and sound and noise, and then on the other side of us, right up our butt, we've got this huge warehouse being planned or proposed. That's going to kill our neighborhood. It will destroy our quality of life. And I'm telling you, it's a small neighborhood, and we're surrounded by two monsters now.
State your name and address, please.
Eric Bruno, 79 Sweet Gum. So I'm not, I don't live actually in that area, but I'm just trying to think of here the greater Middletown Township of add-on issues. I know way too many truckers, and I'm just thinking, how many morons? There's a makeshift truck stop that's down in Bristol, that's down 413, it's right under 75, near the Texas Chicken Plate, that if they're not running 24 hours, which is good, then they got their load coming out of Tennessee, and they got to stop somewhere and wait, or they're going to have to go somewhere else, whatnot, they're going to shoot down South Flowers Mill, not realizing that bridge down there, the train bridge down there, they're going to get stuck all the time. I'm just thinking of all the other truck issues on 413, they're going to be coming out, in and out, you know, they may try to come up, and then they have to loop around towards Oxford and come back around because it's easier to get off the Turnpike down towards Bristol and whatnot, and it's just going to be, it's going to be a truck chaos for moron truckers who aren't paying attention or whatnot. And this just comes from knowing too many truckers. And it's just a quick thought on, back on top of, on top of the immediate issues that they're all talking about, I'm thinking about the broader Middletown Township impact, so, just real quick on that.
Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Connie Doyle. I live at 720 Langhorne Yardley Road. I have lived in Middletown Township all my life. I've seen the traffic become horrendous. My daughter was in an accident on 213 this summer, where she was parked at the light at 213 and Woodburn. Sitting at the light, was hit, straight on, somebody didn't even try to stop, ran right into her, her car was totaled. And this is without all the additional traffic. I'm late in this conversation because I haven't been part of this, part of the Langhorne Gardens community. I grew up there till I was in sixth grade, but I have seen, from Langhorne Yardley Road to this, how things have changed. And we cannot handle the traffic. If this doesn't improve the quality of life in our community, I don't know how you can improve it. And it was very nice to see the plannings and the walls and all that were put on the screen, but it's like putting lipstick on a pig. If the fundamental things are not correct with a plan, no matter how you doctor it, it's not going to make it any different. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes?
I'm just curious, does Middletown actually have a strategic growth plan for the next three, five, 10, 15, 20 years? Or is everything being done ad hoc?
I'm not really sure what you're asking. I mean, it doesn't work that way. When a developer buys a property and wants to do something...
No, no, I'm talking about the township as a whole. Does Middletown Township...
We have a comprehensive plan.
Do you have a strategic vision?
We have a, yes, we have a comprehensive...
And where can the residents get access to that vision so that we can see what's included?
It's a public document.
Are there warehouses included? Are there shopping centers included? Are there commercial centers included? I mean, this is another situation where originally Business Route 1 was and has been the commercial center for Middletown Township. And now you're allowing commercial business to be diverted from Business Route 1 onto an ancillary road, which was never designed to house or handle commercial traffic. So where, if you could share with the residents here, where exactly we can get access to that long-term plan and what the guidelines for that plan are? Is it three years, five years, 10 years, 20 years? I think a lot of us would be interested to know that.
Certainly. We can tell you where you can access the comprehensive plan, but the question you're asking and the issue you're raising is not what the comprehensive plan is going to tell you. It doesn't say, "Our plan is to build a warehouse on this spot and to build a shopping center on this spot," because that's not how development happens. There are zoning ordinances which allow uses for certain types of property.
Right, but when variances are granted, then the zoning ordinances are moot and worthless.
And by the time it comes to us, that decision's already been made. This is an appropriate use...
But you could stand with us as residents and overturn the zoning variance...
No, we can't.
Why can't you? Don't we have lawyers here at the township that we pay for out of our tax dollars?
The zoning hearing board is a different body than us. We can't over...
But can't we challenge that as residents? And how do we do that? Because we, you're spending our money, not yours. Remember that. We pay...
I'm a resident in the township, too. It's my tax dollars, too.
Okay, so you're reaching into your pocket, too, but you're reaching into all of our pockets. So if we want to challenge the zoning variance that was granted here, shouldn't you, as the Board of Supervisors, stand with us on that?
We don't, we're not allowed to.
For the betterment of the community? Aren't you here for the betterment of this community?
Ma'am, legally, we are not allowed to challenge a decision of the zoning hearing.
Okay, so who is?
The developer, depending on the outcome.
Is there an attorney here?
So the developer submitted an application in front of the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board held a public hearing, which all the residents in the township were permitted to attend, and they could have became a party to that application. The decision that the zoning hearing board issued, whoever is a party in that application, including residents that wanted to be, then have the ability to appeal the decision to the court of common pleas.
So how do we challenge it in court?
That window's already closed.
File appeal, the thing is...
I'm sorry, I'm listening to you.
The variance that was granted, I don't know the timeframe, the specific dates when it was granted, but it's well past the appeal period. That hap, you have to...
Well, that doesn't mean we can't have a legal challenge. There's lots of ways to challenge things legally.
Ma'am, you can go file whatever legal challenges you want.
I'm sorry, I'm speaking to the attorney, sir.
No, no, no.
Who could the residents...
Ma'am.
Who could the residents speak to to get assistance with filing a challenge to that variance?
You can try to hire a lawyer. And look at your options.
Okay, so there's nobody at the township who we pay our taxes to who could or would assist us with that?
Not at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out, the comprehensive plan that you referred to...
Oh, thank you.
It is a public document available to any resident that is interested. It's available through the website, the township website. It's a document that's put together with a vision of at least about 10 years, give or take. You know, that's usually about how long it lasts until you have to take a fresh look. And there's four sections in the township comprehensive plan, one of which is focused on transportation, and it looks at a lot of the things you had mentioned, the corridors, the most busiest sections and intersections of the township, and what kind of planned future improvements the township was looking to do. And then when developments come in, we look at that document to help plan where improvements can be made that were identified as issues, move them into the future.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. I want to give the applicant an opportunity to respond, should they choose to, to any of the issues that were raised by members of the public.
Thank you again, Mike Mulway again. So again, I'm not by any shielding my applicant, and anytime the board wants an answer directly from the applicant or the consultants, by all means, they're here and available. So some high points of... So some high points, you know, as you've pointed out, I mean, and as people pointed out, traffic, traffic is traffic, okay? It's there. The law recognizes that it's there and requires us to do certain things. And this applicant has decided, in working with the township, who identified these other ancillary offsite improvements, or at least identified the need for them. That part is going above and beyond to try to remedy that problem. The site, as I think the chairman mentioned, it's zoned industrial. The use is permitted. And the use carries with it an impact, right? That the applicant's trying to mitigate. I want to remind the board too, that, you know, pursuant to the township's requirements and PennDOT requirements, we're required to submit a traffic study, which we have, that shows the absolute worst-case scenario that we could possibly bring to these warehouses. There has been no tenant identified for these warehouses yet. And so we can, maybe it's going to be that bad, right? But chances are, it's going to be less than the I T E, Trip Generation Manual tells PennDOT it's going to be, because the law forces the applicant, you know, at the baseline requirement to do two things, right? To prepare the immediate intersections for that absolute worst-case scenario, and to give you your traffic impact fee, which normal is about $273,000 for your traffic impact fund. So, you know, we're kind of dealt the cards that we're dealt with, we're dealt the zoning that we're dealt with, we're entitled, you know, to construct the use. The traffic is an unfortunate thing, and the applicant is trying to mitigate that impact as best they can. The quality of life issue, I get it. The residents in this neighborhood, in my opinion, have been treated really badly by prior users. All we heard was lights and Amazon and tractor trailers in the middle of the night. And, look, there was no mitigation, no imposition of township standards, no wall, no soundproofing wall, you know? And so they've lived this sort of really bad existence next to these bad, I don't know, I'm not trashing Amazon, but against, you know, some people who didn't use the property without regard to the neighbors. And so I just submit that perhaps the quality of life might be better when the regulations are in place, and when the lights aren't in their windows, and when the trucks are far away from their property lines, and when the buffer is in place, and the berm, and the fence, and everything else is, you know, and the traffic is in sync, that it might improve things there rather than detract. We can't commit to, since we do not know the tenant, we can't commit to a non-24/7 operation. It's not our preference. We don't want to do it. We don't want trucks idling somewhere else. We want them, you know, unloading or loading, but we will abide by every township standard with respect to noise, with respect to air pollution, other things. Your performance standards and your ordinance guide us through this. We think that the extra trees, the extra distance, the buring, again, will mitigate some of the other health, safety, and welfare issues that the neighbors have raised. Anything specific? Corey's here for traffic. Tad's here for sound. Paul? Taylor?
You had mentioned that the lighting system would reduce it by 20 to 30%. Can you go into just a little bit more detail as to how we know that?
Why don't I let Corey talk about that?
I'm sorry, reduce it 20 to 30% from the way it is now, do you mean? I'm not clear. How would you clear on your...
Good evening. Corey Green with Kim Lee Horn, representing the applicant. So the data that Mr. Malloy talked about is a generality as far as the adaptive control systems. What you currently have is a, what we call a closed-loop traffic signal system, those six intersections that Mr. Malloy identified. Those signals, and I believe there's actually the controllers probably right here in the township building that controls those signals, that it just works in a closed-loop by itself. Currently, there is an adaptive traffic signal system along Woodburn and down Lincoln Highway that goes down there. So adaptive traffic signals basically just do that. They adapt to different traffic patterns throughout the course of the day. That number, the 20 to 30%, we did not do a specific study for this area to determine what the percentages could be. However, kind of an industry-wide standard, case studies that have been seen all across the United States, is on the order of 20 to 30% decrease throughout the day. I'm sorry. Decrease in travel times.
Any other board questions?
Address the bridge issue?
Sorry. The bridge issue, it'll be done in accordance with PennDOT permitting. It can only be done during probably daytime, peak time hours. Sorry, I want to address you and stay on video. Yeah, daytime hours, right? Oh, sorry, off-peak hours, sorry, off-peak hours, sorry, apologies. Yes, off, it will be conducted, yes, off, off-peak. Off-peak hours, sorry about that. See, there we go.
I think that was all my notes for issues that were raised by the public. You have something, sir? Yeah, go ahead.
Adam Lamb, in Second Street, 1721. You mentioned quality of life. It would be your negligence if you approve it, because you will change our quality of life, no matter what way you look at it. Quality of life will change. Just to give you an idea, the traffic, yes, is a quality of life. The noise is definitely quality of life. No matter what way you look at it, yous will be responsible, and then there'll be a class action lawsuit, because you can't do what you think you can, because we were established after they bought the property. We were first. They are new. They bought a property, they're new. The old tenant, as he was addressing, with the light issue, the sound issues and all that stuff, well, that was addressed too, but you negligently didn't do anything about that either. Behind my house, there was 150-foot buffer. Somewhere along the line in the township, somebody approved the buffer to drop down to 75. They're using a blacktop as a buffer. Can anybody show me in paper where blacktop is a buffer? I just want to see that. I doubt you'll ever show me that. So a buffer is 150 foot. This building is not going to be where it's supposed to be by ordinance and by probably Pennsylvania's rules. You'd have to look it up. Like, when you say, "Go get a lawyer," we could go get a lawyer. Everybody could go get a lawyer. Probably end up what's going to happen with me, because I'll probably put it into a stalemate for a while, because I have the money to do it, not the township. The township won't put the money behind it. I will. I have the money. I can sit here and do the latest thing for about five to 10 years. That's probably where I'm going to head with it. But you guys are responsible for negligence, and yous will be approving negligent towards your own township people. I think it's a bunch of crap is what yous are doing. You're just wanting to go, money, 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 and let it bring in. You ain't going to get any good taxes off of it, and these people don't care about our quality of life. I want to sleep at night. These people want to sleep at night, and nobody wants to deal with the traffic. Does anybody know where the closest diesel gas station is? It's on Route 1. It's right near DeShell, it's DeShell Gas Station, right near, across from Ford, Remens, whatever you want to call it. It's right over there. That's the closest gas station. Does anybody know that? The next one is all the way down Route 1. You've got to go down Route 1 into Fairless Hills. That's the only other gas station. There's only two. These diesel trucks are going to be pouring in here, blocking that traffic and going to there. They're going to go down, and the only way to get to that gas station is down Woodburn Road, Route 1. That's it. They're going to go down Business Route 1. So yous will block so much traffic that yous don't really care. When you talk about negligence, I would probably get ready for the lawsuit that's going to happen once it's going on, because that's what's going to end up happening. You're going to be negligent. That's how you have to look at it, especially you in the middle. And I'm pointing at you, because you're the only one that's approving it right now. You're the only one that's probably ignorant with the township. Anybody here sees it? I don't think anybody here is blind what they see. You're ignorant. I don't even know how you got elected. I'm done. I will file something when I'm done.
Any other public comment? Any other comments or questions from the board? And if not, I can accept a motion. All right, I'm going to make a motion to grant preliminary and final land development approval for East Old Lincoln Highway Industrial Site S/LD number 22-05 with the following conditions. Applicant shall comply in full with all requirements of the Middletown Township subdivision and land development ordinance and the Middletown Township zoning ordinance, unless relief is granted by the body having jurisdiction. Two, PennDOT highway occupancy approval and township concurrence of roadway improvements must be completed. Three, applicant to contribute $1 million to the township to review and expand the existing Lincoln Highway adaptive system to the proposed site traffic signal and along the Maple Avenue and North Flowers Mill road system. Four, noise barriers and buffers to be constructed as the first stage of work on-site to limit disturbance to neighboring properties. And five, all comments still outstanding in review letter shall be fully addressed for plans to be considered final. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions at this point? Any additional questions from the public? Seeing none, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 opposed?
Nay.
Carrie's 4-1. Next on the agenda, item seven, consideration of preliminary and final land development of the Stone Farm Age Qualified Community at 1551 Langhorne Newtown Road, TMP number 22-005-007, S/LD number 22-07, RA 2 and RA 3 residential zoning districts.
Mr. Kezak, why don't we take a second? I believe the presenters are up.
Sure. Yeah, we're going to take, Mr. Gunlock, we're going to take five.
Oh, it's mine, thanks. It's in my pocket right here. It's not getting stolen, John. Wasn't leaving that out there.
Having to throw it away.
All right. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We are at Agenda Item Seven, Consideration of Preliminary and Final Land Development of the Stone Farm Age Qualified Community. Mr. Gunlock?
Yes, thank you. Rob Gunlock for the applicant, Fox Lane Homes. Here with me tonight is Joe Morrissey from Fox Lane Homes, John Rathfon, and Gia Raffelli, along with Rich Fitzgerald from Gilmore, and Brian Canini from Panoni, the traffic engineer. We've spent considerable time, Mr. Chairman, with, working with the township staff and the surrounding residents on this plan. Just by way of background, I'm going to run through a couple of quick slides here. Let me pull it towards... Maybe not. Okay.
All right, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We are at Agenda Item Seven, Consideration of Preliminary and Final Land Development of the Stone Farm Age Qualified Community. Mr. Gunlock?
Yes, thank you. Rob Gunlock for the applicant, Fox Lane Homes. Here with me tonight is Joe Morrissey from Fox Lane Homes, John Rathfon, and Gia Raffelli, along with Rich Fitzgerald from Gilmore, and Brian Canini from Panoni, the traffic engineer. We've spent considerable time, Mr. Chairman, with, working with the township staff and the surrounding residents on this plan. Just by way of background, I'm going to run through a couple of quick slides here. Let's see. We'll just run through these very quickly and then bring up to current status. We have an approved stipulation, and the terms of that stipulation involve the sale of a conservation easement to the county on approximately 67 acres of land. That has been completed, closed, and recorded. It allows two homes on that side of the property there pursuant to the terms of that conservation easement. Next slide is the plan showing the conserved land. You see it on the right side of the plan there, shaded. The next side, next slide, excuse me, shows the subdivision of the property between the development portion to the left and the conserved land to the right, and the existing improvements on the top of the plan. The next slide shows the summary of the 88 acres to be developed. It provides for 159 age-qualified, single-family detached and semi-detached dwellings, a clubhouse with associated amenities, approximately 35.5 total acres of open space to be owned and maintained by a planned community association. Private roads throughout the community to maintain by this association as well. Next slide shows the development plan. That's the location of the proposed homes on the site. You see the conserved land to the right, and then on the left, Joe Morrissey's going to talk about the open space land on the western portion of the property between the roadway and the proposed homes, and his discussions with some of the township staff members and community residents in connection with the design of that open space. The next slide just shows the rest of the development site. You see the single-family homes along Summit Trace there. We're going to talk a little bit further about additional buring and buffering that Joe has agreed to install adjacent to the Summit Trace residence after speaking with them. The green area is Summit Trace Open Space, which will be merged into and become part of the community association for this project. Next slide, overall record plan from the pending SADO plan set. Next slide, required road improvements. This just summarizes, we're proposing a right-in, right-out-only at the southern access point on 413, full access at the northern access point on 413, a pedestrian crossing with a flasher out to Tollgate Road, and the trail system throughout the project will allow residents to walk through and then over to the county park across Tollgate. Limited right-of-way improvements on Tollgate and traffic light re-timing work in connection with PennDOT along the Route 413 corridor. Next slide, open space planting requirements, and Joe's going to get into this in a little more detail about the open space, the markers, benches, buffering. Joe, I'm going to leave that to you to talk about. But important there, four and five, is the landscape buffer between existing Summit Trace and the new proposed homes, and the installation of a four-foot-high berm to the rear of lots, 80 to 95. So the next slide is actually the open space plan that Joe has been working on with township staff and the residents. Joe, why don't you walk through that with everybody?
Good evening. If it's okay, I'm just going to go to the screen and kind of point.
So, a bunch of you have seen this plan before, especially if you came out to the planning commission meeting. So this is the exact same plan we went through with the planning commission. 413's at the top, Summit Trace is down along here, Tollgate's over on this side, and this is, the homes are kinda on the eastern part of the property that we're building on. So when we had the engineered plan, it was an engineered plan, it was done by an engineer. This is actually done by more of a landscape architect engineer. Our goal was to try to get Penswood Village and try to get kind of like a version two for that. We worked a lot with the township staff, and then also with some of the Savestone Meadow Farms neighbors to try to come up with a plan that we felt really good about. So first up is, you kinda see the trail kinda meandering all the way through, a lot of different points to kinda connect through, through the whole site. Everywhere that you see the red dot is a birdhouse, so there's roughly 11 birdhouses over the course of the open space. The blue are actually the park benches, roughly 11 park benches scattered kind of throughout the site. We did a water feature with the thought of having the fountain, kinda the same thing. Serves dual purpose. People walking the trail will be able to see it. Also, people driving in the neighborhood will get a view of it, so we feel that looked really good. All the areas in the middle will be kind of native plantings from flowers to tall grasses to native trees. The one thing, and Linda Mead has worked a lot with us, kinda given us some ideas of what would or wouldn't work best there. So the next step is to kinda sit down with Linda and kinda fine-tune it a little bit. But the expectation is all native plants, all part of the Middletown Township what is acceptable, but what we think would, you know, look the best and feel the best over the years in the site. And then the thought is to put two signs up, one to kinda tell the history of the property from the Stone family for everything between the township, from the Savestone Meadow Farms, and then also to have some kind of signage that explains the different wildlife and plants that are there, almost like as an educational part to it. The one question that we were gonna throw back to the board, that we also threw back to the planning commission, is we are showing a trail kinda dead-ending at our property before it gets to Summit Trace, with the whole thought of that if, at some point down the future, that Summit Trace did wanna connect to it, they would have an easy option to be able to get down there, kinda run through the neighborhood, and then over to Core Creek Park, which we thought would be a nice, if for some reason the Summit Trace neighbors don't want it, or the township doesn't want it, we would just take it right back off. But from a land planning standpoint, we did feel like it kinda gave a better overall feel to it. Rob mentioned it, there's gonna be a good-sized berm that kinda runs along the property here to try to protect the backs of the residential homes to the rest of the site, especially from the view from 413. I think Linda had mentioned in one of her emails that she would prefer less planting along 413 and more planting here, with the thought that people driving up 413, it's just a better look and a feel as you drive up it, which I think we'd be in agreement to it. And then, it doesn't come down, but on the, Rob had kinda touched on it, on the engineered plan, a couple of Summit Trace neighbors had made a comment just with headlights and the concern with headlights. So we said we'd be totally committed to what we need to do from a landscaping plan. There's a lot of brush now between the existing Stone Farm and the Summit Trace neighbors. The thought is that will always stay. We're just gonna add additional landscaping along there with a berm to try to just give a little bit more privacy. I know Danielle was a big point of her thing, just making sure that with her house that she's not looking into or dealing with headlights while the neighborhood's under construction. So we met with the planning commission, we had said, the thought was we'd try to put that planting in as early as possible in the process, weather permitting, so that if, for some reason, the single families in that area get delayed for whatever reason, the plantings would be in and not have a negative effect on the lifestyle of Danielle or anybody else, any of the other Summit Trace neighbors that live along there. And then the only other thing, just to kinda just touch base, do you mind scrolling back a couple to the open space plan? One more. I think Mary Sly is here. Yep, Mary's there. Mary had mentioned, this is the open space that our HOA will eventually maintain, that we're currently maintaining. Mary had brought up that she takes care of some of that area herself with plantings and some of the stuff that she does. Gia Raffelli, our in-house counsel, had talked to Mary's attorney, and we'd be open to Mary or anybody else of Summit Trace that wanted to maintain any of that property, to do some kind of legal agreement where they couldn't own it, but they could definitely maintain it and do some stuff that they'd want to in it to make it feel like it's their own property. So we're willing to work with the Summit Trace neighbors to make that happen. Back to the open space one more time. One of the comments was just making sure there's some lighting, you know, when pedestrians are crossing streets, so we did add the additional lighting there. The parking will also have lighting. There was a comment to have the sidewalk along 413, even though you have the trail along there, we put a sidewalk at the very top as well, almost kinda like a double dip, just make sure from a safety standpoint, if someone's just walking along 413, they can. If someone wants to kinda meander through the trail, they can too. But it's a really nice that you potentially from here through the neighborhood and then down to Core Creek Park, it'll be a really nice walk-through, through the entire neighborhood. So, Rob, anything I missed?
Nope, I think you hit that.
And with that, I'll turn it back to Rob.
Just a few final cleanup items. Next slide, you can skip that, I think we covered that. This is just where we stand today. We've received five review letters from the township, township engineer, the advisory council, the traffic engineer, fire marshal and suburban lighting. All those letters are a will comply. We recently received the updated letter from the Bucks County Planning Commission. There are a couple items in there we just wanna bring to your attention that are not a will comply, and we'll do that on the next slide. So the Bucks County Planning Commission had a few comments. We just, full disclosure, wanna bring up to you, paragraph three, they asked for another bus stop and bus shelter. There are three bus stops already, one at the corner at Summit Trace and two others to the south, along, just south of our property, and we're not familiar with the bus shelter requirements. We're not willing to install those, but we certainly are willing to grant easements to the township, to SEPTA, anyone who needs them if they feel a bus shelter is appropriate there. Paragraph four was about sidewalks and trails. We've installed those per the stipulation. They were looking for some wider trails, eight feet instead of six feet. We believe six feet are appropriate. We tried to follow, as Joe said, the Penswood Village, they have five feet, we increased it by a foot. We think the eight feet, it just generates more impervious and just is not required. But that was discussed at length and included as part of the stipulation plan at six feet. The setbacks, they're questioning the setbacks from the homes, they are per the plans as well. They asked for a denser evergreen screen. Sure, absolutely, we can put some additional evergreen screen along the existing improvements, as long as the Stone family grants the easements, we'll install that on the plans. And lastly, they asked for a playground in the middle of the open space that Joe just described, and we don't think that's appropriate for that type of open space, number one, and for an age-restricted community. So, no to the playground. All the other items in their letter, they had some other items in there about some screening, are all acceptable and certainly something that we'll agree to comply with. The next slide, just, we're committed to continuing to work with township staff and the residents that are involved in the process with Joe to finalize that open space plan prior to plan recordation. There's no new waivers, these are all the waivers we previously discussed with you and are included in the stipulation. That would be the next slide as well. And then the last slide is just our agreement. If you can hit one more, thanks. We'll install additional birmingham and landscaping behind lots 1 to 10 to address concerns of Summit Trace residents. John Rathfawn has been working with some of the residents, talked to a few of them tonight, and certainly we're committed to doing that and have no objection to that being part of an approval. And lastly, there was a recent request from the township engineer that we consider a pedestrian connection to the entrance of Core Creek Park across Tollgate. We're okay with that, as long as the county can approve it and we can obtain the final engineering approvals by all the parties. It's just a limited extension, just to get people into the park. We're not then extending it then through the park, but certainly township engineer made a good point. We're certainly willing to do it. If it turns out that the county doesn't grant the approval, they wanna do it as part of a larger project, Joe, you're okay with making a fee in lieu for those improvements, that would be held by the township. But either way, we would be willing to address that as part of the final plans. So that's a summary of where we are, and certainly the items that we're committed to continuing to work with the township as part of the final plans for execution and recordation.
Thank you, Mr. Gunlock. Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Any questions, comments from any of my colleagues on the board? Any questions or comments from the public at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name's Mary Sly. I live at 197 Iron Rock Court, of course, here in Langhorn. Joe and John and Gia, they've been great, I'll tell ya, working with me on that, 'cause I had a concern, I did talk with my attorney, just to make sure, you know, that I'm protected. And it looks bigger than it is, you know, when you look at it on that drawing, you're thinking it's like massive, but Joe's come out and John's come out, and they've seen it. Matter of fact, Joe told me he was out there yesterday, and should've knocked at the door. Anytime you come, just knock at the door. Anyway, 'cause that was a concern, and I did talk with my attorney what we can do, and they got, you know, between Gia and my attorney, they'll work it all out, that I'm protected. You know, if there's any kind of problems, I at least need to be able to say, please leave, you know, or try to resolve it. But if you have no rights, you have no rights, you know? So it's, that can make it pretty bad. All right, the other thing, and I brought some paperwork to give to the developers too. My neighbors have been asking, where are the animals gonna go? Nobody cares about the deer. I wish I could take the things from my cellphone and put it on that screen, all the deer that I have in my backyard. You guys would love it. I have a natural wildlife preserve. The birds, it's just been so peaceful and wonderful that, anyway, so what I did is I picked up the phone. I figured out, yeah, you're right, where are the animals gonna go? Who's gonna take care of those guys? So I picked up the phone and I called these people that I know that deal with rescue and, you know, removal, and I kept getting referred to a man named Marco. Obviously, he's the most popular pick. He lives up in Buckingham, and he'll come down for a one-time fee. He'll do an assessment, set as many traps as required, and then, and then, you know, it's the one-time fee, and then here's where it gets a little tricky. Feral cats, each $175, $150 for a fox, $95 for raccoon and smaller animals. Then I picked up the phone and called the PA Game Commission, what are we gonna do with the deer? Now, that's a bigger issue. We have no cages big enough to put a deer. You know, you think of the antlers, all these other things. You have to medicate them because they're a high-stress animal, plus the spread of disease, introducing them into a new herd, neutering them, which they don't do. Anyway, after the long dichotomy talking with Jared, and we were on the phone about an hour, he said, dear, there's two things a community can do. We need to get community involvement. One, he said, hunting, that's the most important thing, responsible hunting. The flocks need to be, the herds need to be thinned out. He said they're well overbred in this area. And you see them on the roads all the time, so you can tell. And the other thing is, they ask people not to feed them. You don't need domesticated deer. So, but I do have a thing, I did misspell a couple things on here, ARC Wildlife Rescue, Kierko's trapping and removal, and then I have the things, you know, with Marcos, so if you have any questions, you can call him. And if you'd like to set some traps between now and the time you start breaking ground, that would help lessen some of the animals or some of the population. They said, try to leave the foxes in place, even though they bark. Their bark is cute. They're out there and they go, "hurrr." I thought it was a deer that got hit on the road and I called the police, and it's, ma'am, that's a fox. I felt so embarrassed, you know? But anyway, he said, yeah, they do get rid of the mice. We have a lot of them. And you know, when they break ground, there is a lot of mice in that ground, and we're gonna get them, we are. I'm getting them now and they haven't done anything, so it's gonna be interesting. But the feral cats, they say they just take them and they play with them, but they really don't eat them. I've seen a couple of them eat them, because they're hungry, especially now that it be in winter. So if you have any other questions about, I'll give you this, and hopefully that will help and calm some of the concerns about animals, 'cause I really, I spent a week talking to a lot of people and came up with, this is the best that we could come up with, so that's the animal issue.
We appreciate you doing that, and thanks for gathering that information and sharing Yes?
Hi, y'all. I think we worked together for about seven years on this project, and I do have positive things to say. I think this building has even changed since last time I was here, so congratulations to all of you. My name's Linda Mead, I'm at 325 Tollgate Road, Langhorn. It's been a breath of fresh air, and working with Joe since he came forward has been very positive. Joe and John have indeed met with Jeff and I to discuss the landscape plan, and he conveyed very well the comments that we had as interveners and parties to the agreement, the settlement stipulation. The one thing I would request from the township is that we be made aware of these kinds of meetings. Back during that seven-year period, as neighbors, a lot of us received notices on a regular basis, whether it was a planning commission, a zoning board, I believe, or a supervisor's meeting, and that practice seems to have stopped. So I'm not positive why that happened, but I heard the folks from the last group saying that they were unaware of that zoning hearing board meeting. So I don't know what the actual law is on that, but I think as good government, just letting us know if we're neighbors, and certainly for us as parties to the settlement agreement, to be made aware of these kinds of meetings would be extremely appreciated. From the standpoint of the landscape plan, I think it's very important that natives are used, and I have reviewed the township zoning ordinance in regard to the list of natives. Some of those, in fact, are not native plants that are on the list. I am very familiar with native plants, and I think we'll come up with a good final plan. I'm very pleased with the benches and the birdhouses and all the various things that are going on. In regard to the native trees, I spoke to a group at Penswood just recently who were very interested in the outcome and some of the details behind the settlement. And there is a very well-known landscape architect there, Henry Arnold, who wrote a book on urban trees, and he may be somebody as a business, he's retired now, but Arnold Associates in Princeton, New Jersey, and I think they could be a very good commenter on this, perhaps give some advice. In regard to the trails, it was mentioned about the Bucks County Planning Commission asking for eight-foot trails versus six-foot. I think six-foot's perfectly adequate for pedestrians. Having worked on the Lawrence Hopewell Bicycle Trail in New Jersey, I know the wider trails, whether it's eight or 10, are usually used if you have bike lanes and you have people passing on bikes. So it's just my thought that six-foot is adequate. So it's just my thought that six-foot is adequate. So other than that, I think the Save Stone Meadows Farm Group has reviewed the landscape plan, looks forward to commenting when that's brought forward further. But we are very pleased with what's going on. So thank you and thanks to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Mead. And thank thanks to you and to everybody from the Save Stone Meadows Group for everything you've done, all of your involvement on this project, going back from the beginning, but also your continuing efforts through the present time. We appreciate you staying involved. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd just like to reiterate that. Thank you so much for everything that you have done. I know I've vested a lot of time in this before, you know, being up here and I I'm so appreciative of your leadership, your knowledge. You know, I hope I hope that, you know, everyone really enjoys all the efforts that you've that you've undertaken over the past seven years.
And Jeff, we'd be remiss if we didn't point you out specifically as well, because you, along with Linda, have really obviously co-chaired this effort on your end. So thanks for everything you've done. Got to, you gotta say something.
Mike and Board, everybody here, I mean, we've been in for the long haul. And I will say, it it is refreshing, just to reiterate what Linda said, you know, we're closing a chapter here. It's been a long chapter and there's been a lot of ups and downs, a lot of money spent. You know, everybody's stuck with this program to the very end. And, you know, it we're not going to satisfy everybody out there, but I'll tell you what, it's probably the best thing I ever did in my life and it's been a pleasure working with you to the very end and I'm proud of that. So thanks for that, everybody, really. So, thanks.
All right, is there any other public comment? Any other questions, comments from any other board members? If not, I can accept a motion.
Make a motion to grant preliminary final land development approval for Stone Farm H Qualified Community SLD Number 2207 with the following conditions. One, applicant shall comply in full with all requirements of the Middletown Township Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance and the Middletown Township Zoning Ordinance, unless relief was granted by the body having jurisdiction. Two, full compliance by the applicant with the terms of the stipulations of settlement approved by the Court of Common Pleas of Bucks County by order dated May 18, 2022 for the land use appeal of KTMT Stone LP Case 2019-08733. Three, all comments still outstanding in review letter shall be fully addressed for plans to be considered final.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Keane. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions at this time? Any questions from the public? Yes, sir.
My name is Eric Nordberg. I live in in the 122 Granite Hill Court Road. But anyway, having been at the previous meeting and the prior meetings, there's words about our negligence and everything, but there's talk about a 10-year plan. It seemed like this project's going on and I can't object to it. But my biggest thing going and living in this in this area is nothing is being done by to to take care of the highways that's going to be dumped on to the 213. We had attractive trails in our prior meeting we had here. I just think that Bucks County as a whole is not doing their work. You talk about a 10-year plan. Is there any 10-year plans to widen these roads around to take care of these extra cars? I mean, fortunately, I'm retired. I don't have to be out there from 3:00 to 6:00 o'clock on the roads around this township. But we keep proving things like this, but we're not doing anything for the good of the community as such. I mean, it's nice to have nice homes come into the neighborhood. I think these gentlemen have tried to do everything to make happy, but I don't think Bucks County is doing their work or doing something with the highways in this neighbor neighborhood in Bucks County. Because no matter where you come, if you come from Doylestown down down to, well, now it's 295, it's it's a disgrace. I mean, we just keep putting more. Anytime a developer comes in, they only look at that little piece of it, but there's nothing being done in Bucks County that I can see to improve the roads and the life of the of the of the community that's already here. And I'm sure it's going to affect your people some way or other by putting this more additional cars on the road and your travel time. So I don't think it's going to be done with it, but I think Bucks County should be ashamed of themselves by not doing something with the highways. You keep approving projects like this and we do nothing. We just close our eyes off. I mean, there's been talks about a red light out there in front of this, let people get out of this development. I don't know if that went through or not, but it's a disgrace what Bucks County on the whole has done for traffic control and this community and and the whole county.
Just one qualification, Mr. Chairman. In the resolution, it was referencing compliance with all review letters. As we mentioned, we're fine with all the township review letters. As to the county, we just ask that you accept the items that are in the Bucks County Planning Commission Letter that we referenced tonight as part of our PowerPoint.
Thank you, Gunlock. I was actually going to make that clarification myself and Mr. Gunlock did send me his response specifically to the Bucks County Planning Commission Letter. And to me, it is in compliance with what our stipulation of settlement did say. We're clarifying it right now. As long as you go so clarified, then I think we're we're fine.
All right, is there any other public comment? All right, so there's been a motion and a second as amended. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Carriage 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, consideration of Middletown Township Department of Public Works Phase One Fueling System. Mr. Kessler?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have two recommendations or two reviews of bids that were opened before the meeting here in the last couple of weeks in regards to the Public Works Yard projects. As you're aware, there's a few phases of improvements that we've been working on the past few years, planning and and kind of laying out which improvements are needed at certain times. Phase one, the first one that we're taking a look at here, is the fueling systems phase, which involves removing the existing underground tanks, which have their permit expiring this upcoming year. And it will replace that with two above-ground tanks, which is preferred where the Public Works Yard is near the floodplain by the DEP. It also involves having two, or I should say, two new gas, one diesel fuel pumps that would replace the existing ones that are quite old and and starting to to fall apart. It will consolidate those into one location. Right now, there's two different spots in the yard, one for the diesel and one for the gas. It includes a canopy over the fuel pumps, which would be a a nice safety improvement for not only the Public Works, but also the Police Department, the few fire companies that utilize the yard. The fueling systems really get utilized by a lot of surrounding communities as well and their departments. So this improvement will will help the entire surrounding area for for that fueling system project. Along with that, there's some fencing and and gate improvements next to the part of the yard that's used for activities related to the storage. So for the phase one, the bids were opened. If you recall, it was bid twice before. Unfortunately, the first time, we did not receive any bids. The second time, we did have one, but they weren't in qualified per our township requirements. This time, we did get a qualified bidder, Scott Building Corporation. The amount for the entire phase one project was provided as $1,532,230. This is the base bid, all including. There weren't any other alternates associated with the project. So if it is to the recommendation of the Board and the funds are available, we would recommend moving forward with the phase one improvements for the Public Works Yard. I'd be happy to answer any any questions.
Can you remind me what was budgeted for this project?
There was a series of years that had $1 million budgeted for the the yard improvements. So the original number for just the fuel pumps and the and the tanks were $1 million. And then, like I mentioned, a few other things have been incorporated in in that phase one, but originally it was $1 million.
Any other questions for Mr. Kessler? If not, I can accept a motion.
And our recommended motion would be the award of of the price provided by the the contractor listed there.
I I got it.
Our contractor.
I'll make a motion to award the base bid to Scott Building Corporation for Public Works Phase One Fueling System in the amount of $1,532,230. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Next on the agenda, consideration of Middletown Township Department of Public Works Phase One A Winter Operations. Mr. Kessler again.
Thank you again. The Phase One A focuses on the winter operations, which included the salt shed replacement, the demolition of the existing one that's beginning to be in disrepair, building of a a new salt shed that meets all the the needs of the Public Works operations, delivery of salt, storage of some equipment, movement through that part of the yard. It also included a couple of alternates, one of which was the brine tanks and brine building, which currently is on the opposite side of the yard. This would bring it all to one consolidated area for during the winter, when they're moving in and out of the yard for taking care of the roads. Another alternate included painting in the salt shed building exterior. And the third alternate was paving the yard area around this this part of the project, which with the demo of the existing building, there would be some areas of the grounds that would just need repaving as a result. We received two bids with the opening of this Phase One A. This is the first bidding that we've had for for this phase, the idea being that it would be right on the heels of Phase One and the timing of which would depend on when the salt shed would be available to be demoed and reconstructed. It would be up and running before the next winter would begin, whether it be winter 2023, '24, et cetera. The lowest bidder, we had two bids, the lowest one unfortunately did not meet all of our requirements in the bid package. The second lowest bidder, the second of the two, did meet the requirements, but their total bid amount was quite a bit higher than than our budgeted amount. The bid with the alternates that we would look to approve for this phase totaled $2,764,498. So if if funds are available, this is a a phase we would want to move forward with. But if the Board prefers, another option would be to rebid this phase, similar to what we did with the Phase One. We'd be happy to take a look at this phase of the items and value engineer with Eric Art Meyer with Public Works to just tweak maybe a couple of things, rebid it in a few weeks and we could see about, you know, hopefully getting maybe some more competitive bids and also a better price. So with that timeline, that that would still have us have this phase follow that Phase One, and that would be an alternate option to take if if the funds weren't available for the bid price that we got this time.
And if I, I'm sorry, what had we been budgeted this for?
This one also originally was more in the $1 million range. I would say as it got into the design and the preference for the salt shed that would fit the township needs, that would be closer to a like a $2 million total price tag. Even with that, this is, you know, considerably higher.
Our administrative team is recommending that we work on this and bring it back to you.
And can you, the applicant that wasn't qualified, would what what was the reasoning why they were not qualified?
They failed to meet the RCO qualifications.
And what qualification was that?
Mostly the apprenticeship history and and programs that they had for the trades.
Could we table this or just we just deny?
We want to reject all bids.
Reject all bids.
I'll make a motion to reject all bids.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions?
Do we think rebidding this will actually help lower the cost any, like with inflation and everything going on right now?
I think it would. I I don't think we'll see like half of the price that we have here tonight, but, you know, with the public bidding process for the township to try to have this phase happen next, rebidding, I think is the best option.
And I think we have the benefit of time and we have, I think what you described is value engineering, which is an opportunity to see if we can tweak this to some degree and maybe get the price down. I think it's worthwhile to at least try.
I agree, yes. And the the benefit of having these projects at the yard with our capable Public Works team, especially with the brine tanks and things like that, there might be some things that they could, you know, do in-house and kind of collaborate with a contractor to do some other parts and that that could save some of the proposed costs as well.
Eric and I have had discussions and we both believe there are things we can cut out of the bid.
All right, any other board questions? Any questions from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carriage 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Kessler.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, consideration of Act 57 Tax Resolution Number 22-33R.
So the Board has in front of it for its consideration, a resolution essentially the Pennsylvania Legislature is requiring you to sign. So the there has been an issue that comes up regularly and that property tax bills inadvertently are sent to previous owners or mortgage companies when properties are sold and it's sold, the tax bill sent to the old owner as opposed to the new owner. So the new owner doesn't pay the bill on time and they're charged a 10% penalty fee. So the PA legislator legislature has passed a bill to allow this 10% penalty fee to be waived by the municipalities and taxing districts in such a situation. The new property owner would need to fill out a waiver request form and send it in showing the event that they were a new property owner and prove it to the tax tax bill collector that it shouldn't be charged the 10% fee. So what we would do is if you pass this resolution, we will send it to the tax collector that we're willing to participate in such a program.
Thank you, Ms. Esposito. Any questions for Mr. Esposito from the Board? Not, I can accept a motion.
I make a motion to adapt Resolution Number 22-33R, which directs the tax collector to waive additional charges for real estate taxes under certain specific circumstances beginning in 2023, and is seconded with Pennsylvania Act 57 of 2022, amending the local tax collection law.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carriage 5-0. Next on the agenda, consideration of approving the 2023 Budget and Budget Resolution Number 22-34R. Ms. Teal, you go first.
Thank you very much. The 2023 annual budget was presented on November 14. It has been advertised for public inspection as required by the law. This budget has no tax increase. It calls for maintaining our current level of services. Just two quick updates for the Board. Since the presentation, we remain on target for both revenues and expenditures for our projections at the end of the year.
I make a motion to approve the 2023 Budget and Budget Resolution Number 22-34R.
Thank you, Ms. Kane, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Payne, there's been a motion and a second, any more questions at this time? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Carries 5-0. And that brings us to other business, Mr. Valla.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Kessler.
Nothing further, just want to wish everyone a happy holiday season, happy new year.
Mr. Esposito.
Just wanted to announce that the board did hold executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss possible litigation matters.
Ms. Teoli Cools.
I'd just like to say thank you to the township team for a great, solid year of work in 2022, and I would like to wish everyone here in the room and in the audience a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah.
I'm gonna say ditto, and I wish everybody a happy holiday season, thank you.
Ms. Payne.
In an effort to be redundant, I'm also going to wish everybody a happy holiday season, and thank the township for all their hard work on the budget, and I also just want to say, like, this time a year ago was definitely a difficult time for me, and I'm very grateful to still be sitting up here today, and I want to thank the community and the township for your support, so that is all.
Ms. Kane.
Thank you, everyone, happy holidays, and I also wanted to provide my thanks to our Police Department and Township for Shop With a Cop that recent, was over the weekend, it was a success, and I'm really proud that that is in our township, and we have a lot of volunteers that, that come up and help.
Ms. Corporal.
So, I always go last, so I'm gonna just repeat everybody, so I wanted to say happy holidays to everybody. Again, I was at Shop With a Cop with a cop on Saturday, and it's always such a fantastic, such a great event, and I thank the township, Police Department for that. And I wanted to thank, I know they're not here, but I wanted to thank Save Stone Meadows, especially Jeff and Linda, for all of their tremendous work over the years, and I was just really pleased that, I know it's not gonna please everybody, but I think that it's just the way they work together with Joe, the new developer, was just fantastic, and I'm, I'm pleased that that is going to get started and finally resolved.
Yeah, happy holidays and happy new year to everybody. I also want to thank Mr. Capera for a wonderful holiday open house, an amazing event, as always, it was packed, we had incredible food trucks and vendors and community organizations and performances, it was just unbelievable event, it always is, so thank you, Mr. Capera, and your department and the Park and Rec Board for all their hard work putting that off. I also want to say, Supervisor Payne, we're happy you're here too. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
We are adjourned.